You want to call Ms. Erickson?
District one, Tam Guthie.
Present.
District two, Jason Minable.
Present.
District three, Dennis Miller.
Present.
District four, Stacy Luntz.
Present. This time we'll have approval of the agenda for the meeting of March eighteenth. Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion.
We have a motion for approval of the agenda for March eighteenth. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda for meeting of March eighteenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. We'll have the invocation and pledge allegiance, invocation by Mr. Porter, pledge allegiance by Mr. Good. Next item on our agenda is the public comments from citizens. And we've got no one signed up, so we'll move on to the next discussion items for the commission. First one on the list is expenditures for the month of February. Everyone has that in your package? We have any discussion for this item? We don't have any discussion for this item. Do I have a motion that's been placed on the meeting next Monday? I have a motion to place this on the meeting for Monday. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to place this on the meeting for Monday. All in favor, say aye. Next thing on the list is Amoresco. Mr. Moore?
Good to hear you.
Yes, please come over here if you don't mind.
I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to come and speak with you this evening. I wanted to be brief. I'm going to talk a little fast. I'm not talking because I'm nervous or trying to pull one over on you. Just other than that, other agenda items. So if you need me to slow down, please stop. If you don't mind, we're just going to flip through this PowerPoint presentation. I laid one at each person's seats. And there's a couple of extras over there if you want. Again, I'm Bill Mera. I'm the county executive with Amoresco here in Alabama. This is Ben Buckner. He is a project development engineer with Amoresco. What we want to talk about today is energy-saving performance contracting for the county. And I'm just going to quickly go through what that is and who we are. And again, if there are any questions, I'll stay as long as I have to. If you don't mind, flip over to page two. First of all, just want to emphasize, and I'm going to define performance contracting. But first, I want to emphasize that it is defined by Alabama state law. There are different states have this, and they have their different legislation. But here in Alabama, it is defined by state law. So this isn't something that, you know, our company came up with. There's not a bunch of fine print in it here and there. It's all based on state law. And essentially, if you flip over to page three, here is a graphic to show what it means. What it is, it allows public entities such as municipalities like Jackson County to partner with energy service companies like Amoresco. We are an energy service company. You may have heard the term ESCO. And it allows you to upgrade your facilities throughout the county using a bundled solutions approach, meaning that you can do multiple things. We're going to talk about what a project would look like in a couple of slides. But it's guaranteed to be self-funded. If you use this as a procurement method and you partner with a qualified energy service company, we guarantee that it's self-funded. So you don't need any new funds whatsoever to perform this bundled solutions project. And you don't need to take money away from a different, you know, line item in your budget to move it over to a facilities budget. And this shows here, this is pie chart, this kind of simplistic way to look at it. Right now, you have a budget that includes energy cost and maintenance cost. That energy cost piece would be better defined. I should have called it utility cost because it also includes water and sewer, although I believe here you all don't pay for your water anywhere. But before the project, you know, you've got your budget. If you do nothing, that budget is going to continue to grow. That little money pie is going to get a little bit bigger because energy costs, utility costs are constantly going up. Maintenance costs are constantly going up. If you choose to move forward with performance contracting, we guarantee that after the fact, that we're going to reduce your energy costs. We're going to talk about how in just a second. We're going to reduce your maintenance costs. And this third piece of pie sticking out there is the guaranteed savings, which again, and I'm wearing out the word, but that's the backbone of the program, is that it is guaranteed to be self-funded. So we guarantee these savings. We'll pay them. Ms. Amoresco, I want to put that. We are qualified accredited energy service provider. We've done about $5,000 in these types of projects, and you all are not a guinea pig. On our website, you can see a list of other municipalities we've worked for. We've worked for small towns, and we've been working New York City and everywhere in between. So you all are, you know, would not be a guinea pig. We've got 63 offices in 34 states. My office is in Pelham, Alabama, which is suburb to south of Birmingham. So I'm dedicated to Alabama. And again, this is our core business. We don't manufacture anything. So we are going to work with you with your problems. I'm not coming to you with a preconceived idea that I must sell you a certain technology or a certain brand because that's what I get paid to do. I'm here to work with you to decide what you want, you know, what's best to suit the county. And again, there is our website. You can jump on that. And then there's a tab that says clients or customers. And then he breaks it down into different types of clients and facilities we have in this town. Is, as I know, next Monday you have your meeting. If we could get it. I left Sandra and Mr. Hodges. There's just one document we need signed with a representative's name on it that allows us to do the feasibility study. And again, and I apologize, I should have brought each one of you copy. In bold letters, it says, "No cost, no obligation." You know, it's not binding. It's no, you know, contract. All it is, is an agreement that you guys want us to do it and that you're going to cooperate with us as in, you know, let us interview you and let us have access to the buildings. So really, that's what I'm looking for, is to, you know, have somebody be able to sign that next Monday night if possible, so we can get started on feasibility study. And again, I appreciate your time. I see you've got other items on this.
I've got a question. If you come in and do it all.
If we do a full comprehensive, if that's something that the county would like to do as far as being able to see countywide, sure, we'd have to do those.
And again, since we don't manufacture anything, we're not incentivized to provide any certain technology, you know, be it back net or standalone units or any equipment manufacturer. So we're going to work with you, whatever is going to work best for you is what we will do.
To be our liaison, you know, if you're going to tell us what you're going to install, it's not that we don't trust you, but we need to know if that stuff's being installed.
If you want to do it that way, you can. The measurement verification piece, we do that as well. And you saw the cost on that spreadsheet. There are four accepted international protocols we have to follow. So it does, I'll admit, it sounds like the fox guarding the hen house, but it's not. There are well-defined, you know, protocols for doing it. But if you want, you know, to have somebody like Ben said, if you want someone to shadow us or come behind us, of course. And again, since these are 10, 15, 20-year projects, and we guarantee the performance every year, we're not going to go out and look for the cheapest equipment or the cheapest contractor because we're your partner for 15 or 20 years. If, and every year, it's an annual check to see that we met that guarantee. So we're not waiting for the 20th year to come back and, you know, when all of us are hopefully retired or late somewhere, check it out. It's an annual review. So if we fail, if we say we're going to save you X, and we save you less than X, we have to write you a check for the difference, and Ben and I have to start looking for other jobs. Right, whether you want to bring in a commissioning agent, you know, during the project or after the project. Now, we open, we operate in the open. Again, we're your partner. We're not trying to finish up and leave. Just the nature of this procurement method, we're going to be here through the end of the project. We can't hide it.
Some commission agents have actually some pretty good ideas on the front end, some pretty good comments, and that just makes our job easier to catch things on the front end.
Is there any more questions?
Let me just ask you a question. When you do the feasibility studies, are you going to do one for every building, or how are you going to do that?
It depends on where you guys have source files. Now, we've been out here before, so we probably would be able to look at every building. If we were doing a job in New York City, we would not look at every building, you know, because it's just not, since we're not charging for it, we'd ask for a sample of, you know, buildings that are so many years old and newer buildings where you have problems. But here in the county, we've already looked at a lot of your facilities, so most likely we would be able to report on, you know, everything.
These feasibility studies, about half from my chair, from looking at bills, looking at pictures, looking at tour, and then half running through and taking pictures.
Yeah, I may not have mentioned that. Part of it's not just a physical assessment, but we look at the utility bills and we'll do a economic study.
That's another reason for the, for the way.
Any more questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for having us.
If we have a motion, put this item on a Monday meeting. I want to take that with this tone. I have a motion to put Amoresco on the meeting as far as the feasibility study goes.
No cost.
No cost. Just put this on the meeting for Monday for the feasibility study. Have a motion and a second to add Amoresco to the meeting Monday. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Next item is County Road 820, Ms. Cook.
Yes, thank you for listening. If you have a slide here that I would like for you all to see. Several of you don't know I was published here, Mr. Miller, I'm at where the location is, and you had no idea. Well, there's my GPS one because nobody knows how we're out in the fire department. So if I can hand you this, then just pass it around, please. I think it'd be enlightened, to say the least. What, we have several of our homeowners here for County Road 820. I've lived out there since on July of '07. The county has been paying county taxes all this time and not once has the county been out there. We've called them, we've called them. About County Road 820, our road as well as County Road 220. 220 floods terribly. They did build it up a little bit. They put one big drain over there. That was great. Unfortunately, we need about four more out there. It's accessed by not only County Road 220, 221, 531, Old Larkinville Road, and County Road 820, as well as the school buses from Woodville. We've called the county countless times out to fix these. They bring a band-aid. They throw a little bit of gravel in a hole with water. Nothing's fixed. Our road, County Road 220, has just now been picked up by the county only because we had a ditch that was dug from the last house that was built in this area, which was not the end of Fern's house. And the ditch was not, the ditch was not at Dakota. So we ended up calling Philip, which was the engineer for the county. He came out and he happened to look at it. He said, "Yeah, he could fix that." It's been nine months ago, as long as the contractors would receive and take care of it. They agreed with James Taylor and Steve Webb. Okay? They agreed to it. Philip, Northern County has been out there since. Like I said, whoever has fell in the holes in our County Road 820, which is just a cullisack, is my husband at our expense. We're still paying county taxes all this time. We've been ignored by the city. We've been ignored by the county. For, well, Mr. Hastings, Father Glenn Hastings has spoke to Mr. Barimol several times regarding this problem. And I guess we as residents are just getting a little tired of being ignored. And we would, we appreciate it you listened to our needs. We also had another problem that we were supposed to have a fire hydrant out there. We never did. Of course, I need to speak to WSG about this again. We've been having that for over five and a half years. They told us that we had three-inch pipes. We didn't. We had six-inch pipes, but we wouldn't have city water. I happened to take the blueprints to them, showed them. He said, "Well, no, no, you have six-inch pipes, but you don't have enough pressure." So I had contacted, I'm not part of it, was the fire chief at that time, and I asked him, "We had two fire hydrants, nine tenths of a mile on each side," which was Old Larkinville Road and County Road 531. He checked both pressures. They were ample PSI, and he said that it was feasible and no reason why we couldn't have a fire hydrant. Of course, took it back out to WSG and they said, "It's not up to Mr. Potter. It's up to WSG." I said, "Fine. We really need a fire hydrant." 531, 220, 221, 820, none of them uncovered. We had a fire, unfortunately. We called the fire department. They called us back 10 minutes later, said, "Well, how do you get out there? We don't even know where that is." Because none of the maps, there's 14 county roads that was not even on the maps. Nobody knew where we were. Fortunately, no one was injured. What's it going to take before we do get there? I don't know. I'm just pleading our case and hope that, that someone can help us. You know, after 20 years, this problem has existed, and I've been tiding it for only five and a half. That's it. And we're paying county taxes, and they won't even come out. They won't do anything. Part of the problem also, if you look at some of those pictures, you'll see someone had hired someone from San Mountain to come down and trim all the trees out there. They were left in the ditches. They were not cleaned out. That added to the problem because there was no culverts, there's no drainage. We understand that this is government-protected. Fine, they're wetlands. They're important. I know this myself because I've worked in county buildings. But the point is, we're not able to access our home. We don't have a fire hydrant. Our insurance on our homes would be cut in half if we had access to a fire hydrant.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
As far as these limbs being cut, was that part of the electro-coop that come through there?
Part of it, also, yes. Part of it was all family electro-coop. They came and they left a great big mess, and they didn't clean it up either. Retirement, our country.
Are you in the city limits?
We are in the county. We are County Road 820, it's 35768. We have city water. We don't pay county taxes.
Philip, I know this was before you, you come to work for the county, but do you know the subdivision was approved, I mean, the big subdivision?
Actually, no, sir. I'm Philip. I'm not talking to you. Nice to meet you. I do just like to, well, James Taylor, the fire chief. We've been out there, served the county as well. My son probably four or five, and I met with Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, James Taylor, and Steve Webb.
Yes, Mr. Webb. And what Ms. Cook said about the ditch is absolutely correct. Up until just a few months ago, this road had never been a part of the county mountain system. I know the subdivision's been there for several years, but it fell, for whatever reason, it did not become a part of the system. When the ditch was dug, this all came to light, and the previous commission actually accepted this road into the system just about a month or so after the disaster. It has been taken. What Ms. Cook referred to about the ditch, actually, the ditch was a problem. We complained to Mr. Webb and Mr. Taylor, and they were going to fix the ditch, what to try to do is make water run up here when they want out. The law has actually got to do with that, and they took it. They said they would, and they didn't agree to see the thing.
I know, in my own experience with buildings, subdivision problems you have to go through, it's something like, there's some steps that want to tap you. I mean, I know now, I don't know 20 years ago, what the law was, but I mean, the contractor is in charge of installing the fire hydrant. That's something that you have to do before you can get the subdivision approved and before.
He did, they did have one. As a matter of fact, Mr. Glenn, at the end of the road, gave up part of his property to have it put in there. And WSG only put a bleed-off valve, which they say goes off every morning, if you're in the morning home. You know, I've been there five and a half years. I think it's went off three times. And, but as far as the ditch is concerned, Mr. Taylor said that you would fix it if they were still deceived and were doing it.
Be, I'll be glad to talk to you about that with Ms. Cook. But basically, the water doesn't make it, the fire hydrant is, that water won't wait with flush valve.
Yeah, flush valve, yes.
Flush valve, yeah. I said, "Fire hydrant." Where it's at, that water needs to continue on actually down that natural drain that's probably never lasts two hours. We have no authority to go out and cut that ditch on private property. But that was the intent, if they were ever to cut that ditch so that water will go out, then we can come back and fix the ditch. If we start fixing the ditch and raising it up, then we're going to pond that water at that. I live in the Black's House, and the house.
It is the Black's House, and the fashion.
So we really cannot do anything with that ditch without flooding that ditch until on the pipe's flush valve, somebody takes the initiative to go forward with that and take the ditch on out, back down, and there's a creek right behind those houses.
Yes, there is.
That actually is all the way to that flush valve between those two houses down that creek. Then we can fix the ditch, that's how they're going to pond it.
Well, now, apparently, Mr. Glenn was approached by Mr. Taylor about doing that, digging another ditch in between his property. He said, "You're not digging another ditch in between," because I've already given most of all my property, well, what was supposed to have been fire.
Before those houses were ever built, that was the natural drain between those houses. They tried to extract, well, they have extracted it. And until you get that opened up, that ditch can really not be.
So who's going to be responsible for the, for the other homeowners? I mean, it's not on my side, but, you know, there's several that are on it, so.
As of September, I believe it's September, October, we were responsible for the roads and the part of the highway. To actually get off on private property and do that ditch, we can't do that. Mr. Porter might have to, you know, ask.
I agree with the engineer. If it's all, if the problem's on private property, then the county cannot get off on private property. We're going to private property.
So what about County Road 220?
Because that's especially related with the water staying.
That's correct. That's what they've been looking at. Like I said, you know, they block the, you know, the ditches that's draining. If they would just build it up and put some more drain house like they did, right where the ditch was, looks great. We only need that for the next.
I know Commissioner Redd was probably familiar with this area, and I think Mr. Van Bullock, this is a very low area. And the road is, you know, it is what it is. It's what's that. We looked at, we was out there before, we got out, couple of graphic maps, and got to looking at those rocks here, and seeing if there's some way, just like we did, Commissioner Van Bullock on 33, trying to figure out some way to get the water out of there. Those woods stay in water the entire time. We've been unable, I'm sure there's a way, hopefully, that we can get to work with what we have to go down and hold it up. There appear to be some river dams and stuff.
There are some river dams. As a matter of fact, Glenn Hastings has spoke to Mr. Minable of countless times about that situation. He apparently does have a permit from the state, I believe, to backtake the most of those dams. But, you know, it's still, dropping a little bit of gravel in a hole full of water is not solving the problem. You know, like I said, we may not have any other way out. You're talking about the safety of people, and that's just something that needs to be done and looked at.
I'm going to lay it out loud in the connection with you. The way.
Exactly, right.
And, you know, we can't go off of the county route as far as what we can do. Do you have permission? And I know, tragically, they didn't talk to Ray Taylor, I think, the owner of the large piece of property.
Yes, and he gave permission. Yes, and maybe as a.
Any of y'all know what the city pays? I know Daniel Pierce, that does give a gratification for the city. I think he's on, like, the tangerine, like, pays a monthly payment. I'll try to get Mr. Pierce's number and maybe have a conversation with him. But we've, we've got to come up with a way of paying for Mr. Pierce. And, I mean.
Mr. Mees, he's been doing this out of his pocket for a long time. He's so, I mean, county taxes are not going to be reimbursed. He's providing that community a service.
Is not telling you the zebra's going to solve the problem.
No, there's going to be more than just taking here the zebras. That may be a start. The second is, we need more culverts. It can still remain a wetland. It's not the problem. The problem is building the road up and putting culverts underneath.
How long is this road?
That road is probably, what, quarter of a mile long, would you say?
220.
Well, it's, just from that one area, yes. Probably quarter of a mile.
Ms. Cook, if you will. This is the first time this has been brought before us, first time I even had any conversations about it. Give us a little bit of time to come up with a proposal, to try to get you something, get you fixed. And you can hold me. You can call me if you ever want to do it, because I will try to stay on top of it and try to get you some type of report back of where we go from here. That's the best I can do, because like I said, I've never even had a conversation about this, too.
Yeah, I know. Like I said, I spoke to Mr. Mallor, and, you know, Mr. Hastings has spoken to Mr. Barimol, and I spoke to Mrs. Mr. Hodges. And, you know, like I said, we're feeling like the redheaded stepchildren back there.
Give us this opportunity, and I'm not talking about a long time, but give us a week or two to get something together.
That's fine.
And we will try to get with the engineer and the chairman, and we'll try to come up with something and let you know where we're standing. This might be a process that we have to talk with some of you as we go through it, but we will try to get something proposed instead we can't make a permanent fix.
I was round for victory with this, and it was long before there was ever a subdivision there, and in there, you know, the job, there's always been water, and it's all the stuff. And our leave population is.
But you didn't have a community to exist. Now, if you do, and we're paying county taxes, that's why they.
I would say that on the commission, as a time that they approved that subdivision, I would not have the ability to approve that subdivision, because it's not included.
No, like I said, it is approved, but, you know, when we don't have any protection, you know, against fires or anything else, like, you know, we don't mind paying our taxes, but.
You said you didn't have a fire hydrant there?
We were supposed to have. Actually, James Taylor and Steve Webb had a fire hydrant. It was code-proved, and they were supposed to put it at the end of the culisack on the corner of 220 and 820. Like I said, there was plenty of PSI, but WSG didn't want to do it. I said, "No, no." They wouldn't do it. They put a bleed-off, which they said would go off at 2:30 in the morning. Well, like I said, I've lived there five and a half years, it's just went off three times. That's it.
And you don't know the reason that you're installing?
Oh, yes, they told me at first. One gentleman there told me he had three-inch pipes. That's when I proceeded to get the blueprints, taken them up and show them, and say, "We wouldn't have city water if we didn't have six-inch pipes," which we did. I went and got the blueprints and planned a mission. Then when I took that up there, then he said, "No, what I'm saying is," I didn't say you didn't have six-inch pipes, which he did, as you didn't hear or there. But then he said we didn't have any PSI, and that's when I, we didn't have enough pressure. So that's when I proceeded to get Mr. Potter involved, when he was, you know, the fire chief, and he came out and said it was ample pressure, and there was no reason, it was quite feasible that we had one. But when I took it back, they told me that it wasn't empty. And then when we had the fire, the fire department, you know, told us about all the black trash bags, and the fire department was putting over the ones that didn't work, and WSG made up a little, like, rubber things around the ones that didn't work, so we're like, "No."
What road review in regards to this fire hydrant? Is it 220?
We are on County Road 820. The two fire hydrants that were there was County Road 531, which was exactly nine tenths of a mile from my address. And the other one was Old Larkinville Road, which, if you may have left off of 220 on the Old Larkinville Road, it was right there. That one was 400 and some PSI, the other was 300 and some PSI. When I fought this again, after Minister Potter became mayor, and I went back up and tried to fight this again, they went out and shut them both down, completely shut them down, perfectly good. Moved it. Moved it. Moved one of them. Moved one of them way down right next to one that was working quite fine.
Philip, do you know, uh, when they dropped 820 into a cantorory, if the fire hydrant was discussed, or, uh, that's a requirement, you're, uh, subdivision's approved, and it's supposed to have a working fire hydrant, you know, and multiple fire hydrants if you have, you know, X amount of room.
There's 220, 221, and 820 and 531 has no access. None. And we've already had one fire out there in five years I've lived there. And it could have been very fatal for our little boys.
What is the name of the subdivision?
There is no name.
We, we call it Taylor Webb.
Taylor Webb subdivision.
Was this inspected by us before we took this into the inventory?
It was, this, as I mentioned, this subdivision was did, uh, completed about ten years ago, and it fell under different guidelines and commission. I don't know if it's reported or not, but I remember it was, when we discussed it, they went back, they called it happened, and, uh, it was spoken to anybody back years ago, or that, I don't know, County dropped all of the, the subdivision.
Was the subdivision approved just a road?
Uh, the subdivision was just approved back when, like, uh.
Did Ms. Cook, was that ten years?
Um, I, I moved in in oh seven, and I was the third house there in oh seven.
And they, the actual, they, they thought when they approved the subdivision, they had taken the notice and insisted upon the reality they had.
I remember this.
And they felt that in the culture of the ditching situation and felt like they approved the commission, decided to take it in view of circumstances surrounding the whole.
Did you say that you met with the planning commission?
Uh, no, I picked up an actual blueprint, um, of subdivision, yeah, that showed the beginning of six-inch pipes.
Okay. Was that, was that from Scottsboro Planning Commission or was that from the pro-eject?
Uh, I'm not sure. That was, uh, Mr. Taylor picked that up for me and brought it to me and sent us the blueprint. And I have taken it to W S G, within the group of the county.
Well, Ms. Cook, if you will, like I said earlier, just give us a little bit of time to prepare something.
I appreciate that.
And we will, we will be back in touch with you, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, I appreciate that. I know several of our, I've heard of the call, Channel nineteen, so.
Yes, ma'am.
If you're here, like, you're like.
I will read my number, yes, if you want me to.
Just give us that opportunity to get something prepared and we'll proceed from there.
You want me to?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Two, five, six, two, four, four, twenty-six, nineteen. Twenty-six, nineteen, yes, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am.
I know I don't have permission to speak, but I, um, if you saw the pictures where that, uh, Leyland Cyclops was, it had that green thing, that's that pop-off valve. I don't know, I'm not a engineer or nothing.
It's a flush hydrant.
But it looks like to me they could drop a fire hydrant on top of that. And if it needs ditching back to the creek, since I own part of that land, I assume, I don't know how you would do that, an open ditch or pile ditch or what. I would be glad to consider that as, as the plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I can assure you that the fire protection, the fire hydrant, probably number one for myself.
But I will tell you this, just briefly, and then we'll go further and give us time to report back and we'll have the facts better. Fire hydrants are based on volume, so it's not pressure. You can have a hundred fifty pounds, but if you don't have enough water when that thing opens, that's how people get very confused real easy about fire hydrants. But, um, I'm not saying that's the case. We'll have to look into it and see, but there's gotta be another reason why a fire hydrant's not there. Fire hydrant's not that expensive.
Well, that's why I had the, the fire chief, Mr. Potter, come out and check and to see if it was even feasible.
Yes, ma'am.
And he said, absolutely. So, I figured him being the fire chief, that would.
Well, give us a little bit of time, and then we'll report back to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item is budget amendments. Everyone has a copy of the budget amendments that have been proposed. Any discussion on budget amendments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to add this to our meeting for Monday. We have a motion to add this to the meeting for Monday. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to add the budget amendments to the meeting for Monday. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes all the items on our work session agenda. At this time, we will entertain reports from, Ms. Erickson? I apologize, let's go back up to item number five on the discussion items. This will be Bridgeport Library, Ms. Brown.
I'm going to start out from Bridgeport Public Library and when you pay for Bridgeport Library. At the moment, we are considered a branch of the Scottsboro Public Library at our statements and Woodfall, and we would like to be an independent library. So, I contacted the state, the Alabama Public Library Service, and asked them what we would have to do in order to be an independent library. And they said that we would have to have the local approval. And since you are the governing body that has control over the libraries, we would need your approval in order to become an independent library.
I have a question. Do you have a board or directory?
Oh, yes, sir. We, the library has been in existence since, I believe, nineteen ninety-four, and the president of library board voted to be independent in September.
Have y'all drafted a, a letter with that request to the chairman?
I did not know that I was supposed to.
I'm just asking.
No, sure.
This is the first I've, I've learned of this.
We have not drafted that.
Ms. Brown, how did you receive the funding? You have, um, state funding or county funding?
We receive, we receive state funding, which is provided by the, it goes to Scottsboro. Scottsboro takes the funding for statements, every state funding for, Scottsboro, statements and Woodfall. No, no, Dutton is an independent library. Dutton is an independent. Everyone else, all the funding goes to Scottsboro. Scottsboro takes the checks and then sends them out to the libraries.